Good evening, Council, staff members, and to all the residents and others who have joined us this evening. Today is September 12th, I'm sorry, September 10th, 2025. Welcome to our regular Mableton City Council meeting. Madam Clerk, if you will, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Owens.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan Davis of District 1.
Present.
Councilmember Damian Oladapo of District 2.
Present.
Councilmember Kisha Jeffco of District 3.
Present.
Councilmember Patricia Alk of District 4.
Present.
Councilmember TJ Ferguson of District 5.
Present.
And Councilmember Deborah Herndon of District 6.
Present.
Quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Just to make sure, do we have, can everybody hear us? Okay. Can we turn up?
Testing.
It's very, it's very low. Sorry, Mayor.
That's fine. We're gonna go ahead and proceed. Mr. Manager, would you mind leading us in invocation, please, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. For those who are willing, would you join me in prayer? Heavenly Father, Creator of all, loving God, we pause, we stop, to say thank you and acknowledge you as the God that we love and serve. Thank you for our city of Mableton. Thank you for the leaders on this council. We thank you for a wonderful state of the city. We thank you for our wonderful citizens, all the public safety officers, all the businesses. We're very grateful. So, we just pause to say thank you and give you praise, and we ask your blessing upon this meeting, that you will give our council, wise council, that they may make decisions to lead this city, watch over our citizens with your angels as they travel to and from this meeting. We ask this in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Ladies and gentlemen, if you could please stand, if you will, for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, have you been provided a copy of the agenda prior to the meeting? If there's no substitution or changes, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'll second.
Thank you, motion's been made and properly seconded. All is in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. No opposition, the ayes have it. We'll move forward with the agenda. The next item we have is a public hearing for this evening. The public hearing is the City of Mableton interim 2045 comprehensive plan transmittal hearing. And to discuss that, we have our Deputy Community Director, Tina Garver. The floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council, City Manager. As stated, I'm Tina Garver, Deputy Director for Community Development for the City of Mableton, and I'm here tonight to present the City of Mableton's Comprehensive Plan. You may recall earlier this summer, we did have a public hearing for a comprehensive plan, and we transmitted that plan to the Department of Community Affairs and Atlanta Regional Commission for review. That plan was the Cobb County Comprehensive Plan in its entirety. What we were advised during that review process was we cannot adopt the full Cobb County Comprehensive Plan, it needs to be a plan that's specific to the City of Mableton. Based on that feedback, community development staff pulled relevant information from the Cobb County Plan, worked with Cobb County GIS to prepare maps that are specific to the City of Mableton. Now that we have that revised plan available, we are having another public hearing to gather public comment on this plan, and then we will transmit that plan to the Department of Community Affairs and Atlanta Regional Commission for review. Once that plan has been reviewed and approved by those agencies, it will be back before this body for final adoption. And then, just as a reminder, we are also working through our current full comprehensive plan process that will be back before council next spring for adoption, and this is just an interim plan that's based on the Cobb County existing adopted Comprehensive Plan. Once this plan is approved and adopted, it will allow the city to maintain its qualified local government status.
Thank you, Ms. Garver.
Are there any changes?
Ms. Garver, I think you...
The version that's adopted, I mean, the version that's attached to your agenda is the revised plan for your review.
Got it, thank you.
So, at this point in time, Council, any other questions of Ms. Garver? And this is on the agenda, Council, as a public hearing, so if there's no initial questions for her, I'm gonna go ahead and officially open a public hearing. That being said, ladies and gentlemen, go ahead and open the meeting for a public hearing related to this Council Comprehensive Plan transmittal. If there's anyone I'd like to speak on behalf of this transmittal, please make your way to the podium at this point in time.
Denny Wilson, District 2. What I would really like to see from you guys is when you have the public hearings on things as significant as the Comprehensive Plan, to have slides or something for us to see, even if it's a scaled-down version, because probably most of the people in this room have never even looked at the Comprehensive Plan, they don't even know what it is, and not saying anything against you guys, but if you look at what the county does, when they do stuff like that, they have the slides on the screen, and they go through the slides so that the taxpayers understand what's being put before them. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Cook?
Hello, my name is Roberta Cook. I'm Executive Director of the Riverline Historic Area, and I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity for the input yesterday in the Comprehensive Plan special areas, which there were two, for Six Flags and also for the Riverline. And I did give a lot of input yesterday for those, so I'm curious what's being presented today. I mean, are they that fast, they would turn it around overnight and give it to you and not show it to us? So, what are you referring to as far as the revised plan? And I would like to see it, too, is it online for us to see somewhere? Because we do need to see that to make thoughtful comments on it, so, thank you.
Thank you for that, Ms. Cook. So, Ms. Garver, I think it's best that we back this up a little bit and explain actually what's going on. We have a Mableton 2045 Comprehensive Plan that's been in the works for a while now, many of you have been involved in it, many of you have gone to some of the, some of you actually own that committee. Going through this process, to be compliant with the Department of Community Affairs, it was suggested to us by the Department of Community Affairs that we adopt the Cobb County Comprehensive Plan as an interim measure, not to be changed, and we can talk about whatever changes, but the goal, as I understood it, was we would use Cobb County's Comprehensive Plan as an interim for a submit to the, to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs to allow us the gap of the time that we would need to be able to finish our Comprehensive Plan. So, any discussions about focus area groups or Mableton 2045 is separate and distinct from this. That is why this says the City of Mableton interim 2045 plan, which I don't particularly like the name, but it is Cobb County's Comprehensive Plan that we're submitting to the state as an interim step until ours is complete. Would that be a correct statement, Ms. Garver?
Yes, that's exactly right, and I apologize for not having the slides, I thought about it, but because there are not actually any new changes, this is Cobb County's future land use and Cobb County's policies and goals that they established through their planning process, I did not prepare the slides, and I can do that for you next time. But we do want the citizens' feedback, and the feedback that you give is for the Mableton 2045 plan. That plan, which will be adopted next year, next spring, is the plan that's gathering all of your feedback and will relay what the City of Mableton should look like based on the public feedback. This plan is Cobb County's previously adopted Comprehensive Plan, where we pulled out anything that mentioned Mableton and then created a separate document. And then, that document is attached to this agenda, if anybody wants to take a look at it, and then also, you can reach out to the Planning Office, and we'll be happy to share it and answer any questions you have as well.
Mayor, didn't we already adopt this?
So, what happened, and I don't, I don't want to say this is a formality, but we used the logic saying nothing changed from the time that everyone was involved, that wanted to be involved, to create this Comprehensive Plan that went through all the processes and procedures with the county. If we were doing nothing more than taking the subset and submitting it, we weren't changing anything, therefore, there's no need to have a public hearing about it. Department of Community Affairs wants us to have a public hearing and go through the process, so therefore, we are. Nothing is changing on our end, we're not modifying what the county, therefore, the citizens have already approved, it's simply a matter of us adopting it so we can resubmit what they already have back to them.
And the, this is out there already?
It is.
Okay, so people can go to where to look at this whole plan?
We thank you for a wonderful state of the city. We thank you for our wonderful citizens, all the public safety officers, all the businesses. We're very grateful. So we just pause to say thank you and give you praise. And we ask your blessing upon this meeting that you will give our council, wise council, that they may make decisions to lead this city, watch over our citizens with your angels as they travel to and from this meeting. We ask this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Ladies and gentlemen, if you could please stand if you will for a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, you've been provided a copy of the agenda prior to the meeting. If there's no substitution or changes, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'll second. Thank you. Motion's been made and properly seconded. All is in favor of approving the agenda. Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. No opposition. The ayes have it. We'll move forward with the agenda. The next item we have is a public hearing for this evening. The public hearing is the City of Mableton interim 2045 comprehensive plan transmittal hearing. And to discuss that, we have our deputy community director, Tina Garver. The floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council, City Manager. As stated, I'm Tina Garver, Deputy Director for Community Development for the City of Mableton. And I'm here tonight to present the City of Mableton's comprehensive plan. You may recall earlier this summer, we did have a public hearing for a comprehensive plan, and we transmitted that plan to the Department of Community Affairs and Atlanta Regional Commission for review. That plan was the Cobb County Comprehensive Plan in its entirety. What we were advised during that review process was we cannot adopt the full Cobb County Comprehensive Plan. It needs to be a plan that's specific to the City of Mableton. Based on that feedback, community development staff pulled relevant information from the Cobb County Plan, worked with Cobb County GIS to prepare maps that are specific to the City of Mableton. Now that we have that revised plan available, we are having another public hearing to gather public comment on this plan, and then we will transmit that plan to the Department of Community Affairs and Atlanta Regional Commission for review. Once that plan has been reviewed and approved by those agencies, it will be back before this body for final adoption. And then, just as a reminder, we are also working through our current full comprehensive plan process that will be back before council next spring for adoption. And this is just an interim plan that's based on the Cobb County existing adopted comprehensive plan. Once this plan is approved and adopted, it will allow the city to maintain its qualified local government status.
Thank you, Ms. Garver. Are there any changes? Ms. Garver, I think you...
The version that's adopted, I mean, the version that's attached to your agenda is the revised plan for your review.
Got it. Thank you. So at this point in time, counsel, any other questions of Ms. Garver? And this is on the agenda, counsel, as a public hearing. So if there's no initial questions for her, I'm going to go ahead and officially open a public hearing. That being said, ladies and gentlemen, go ahead and open the meeting for a public hearing related to this comprehensive plan transmittal. If there's anyone like to speak on behalf of this transmittal, please make your way to the podium at this point in time.
What I would really like to see from you guys is when you have the public hearings on things as significant as the comprehensive plan, to have slides or something for us to see, even if it's a scaled-down version. Because probably most of the people in this room have never even looked at the comprehensive plan. They don't even know what it is. And not saying anything against you guys, but if you look at what the county does, when they do stuff like that, they have the slides on the screen, and they go through the slides so that the taxpayers understand what's being put before them. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Cook.
My name is Roberta Cook. I'm Executive Director of the Riverline Historic Area, and I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity, for the input yesterday in the comprehensive plan special areas, which there were two, for Six Flags and also for the Riverline. And I did give a lot of input yesterday for those, so I'm curious what's being presented today. I mean, are they that fast? They would turn it around overnight and give it to you and not show it to us? So what are you referring to as far as the revised plan? And I would like to see it, too. Is it online for us to see somewhere? Because we do need to see that to make thoughtful comments on it. So, thank you.
Thank you for that, Ms. Cook. So, Ms. Garver, I think it's best that we back this up a little bit and explain actually what's going on. We have a Mableton 2045 Comprehensive Plan that's been in the works for a while now. Many of you have been involved in it. Many of you have gone to some of the, some of you actually own that committee. Going through this process, to be compliant with the Department of Community Affairs, it was suggested to us by the Department of Community Affairs that we adopt the Cobb County Comprehensive Plan as an interim measure, not to be changed, and we can talk about whatever changes, but the goal, as I understood it, was we would use Cobb County's Comprehensive Plan as an interim for a submit to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs to allow us the gap of the time that we would need to be able to finish our comprehensive plan. So any discussions about focus area groups or Mableton 2045 is separate and distinct from this. That is why this says the City of Mableton interim 2045 Plan, which I don't particularly like the name, but it is Cobb County's Comprehensive Plan that we're submitting to the state as an interim step until ours is complete. Would that be a correct statement, Ms. Garver?
Yes, that's exactly right. And I apologize for not having the slides. I thought about it, but because there are not actually any new changes, this is Cobb County's future land use and Cobb County's policies and goals that they established through their planning process. I did not prepare the slides, and I can do that for you next time. But we do want the citizens' feedback, and the feedback that you give is for the Mableton 2045 Plan. That plan, which will be adopted next year, next spring, is the plan that's gathering all of your feedback and will relay what the City of Mableton should look like based on the public feedback. This plan is Cobb County's previously adopted Comprehensive Plan, where we pulled out anything that mentioned Mableton and then created a separate document. And then that document is attached to this agenda if anybody wants to take a look at it. And then also, you can reach out to the planning office, and we'll be happy to share it and answer any questions you have as well.
Mayor, didn't we already adopt this? So what happened, and I don't want to say this is a formality, but we used the logic saying nothing changed from the time that everyone was involved, that wanted to be involved, to create this comprehensive plan that went through all the processes and procedures with the county. If we were doing nothing more than taking the subset and submitting it, we weren't changing anything, therefore, there's no need to have a public hearing about it. Department of Community Affairs wants us to have a public hearing and go through the process. So therefore, we are. Nothing is changing on our end. We're not modifying what the county, therefore, the citizens have already approved. It's simply a matter of us adopting it so we can resubmit what they already have back to them. And the, this is out there already? It is. Okay, so people can go to where to look at this whole plan? The plan in its entirety is what Cobb County has been, so...
Mr. Mayor, ma'am, if...
Please, sir.
Yeah, it may be worth stating to the council, this, as Mayor Antina tried to describe, for compliance with active city status, there's certain boxes we have to check. Listen very carefully. Our comprehensive plan, the one that we're going to go by, is Mableton 2045. This is just something to have on the records with DCA, because they required. We had already done this, but they wanted to make sure we get through the proper procedures, and that is first, public, transmitted from the public, then it's got to go to ARC, then it comes back to DCA. This is more procedural than anything. Somebody can go read this, but this is not what we're going to build our city on. Our city will be built on the 2045 Plan. This is just to hold us until we get that adopted plan, I believe, in the spring, and that's when we plan to have the 2045 Plan officially adopted. So it's okay to go look at it, but I think we're putting a little bit more energy in this that made us, this is more, nothing more than a procedural process to make sure we're compliant with DCA. But if you really want to know where the city's going and what the city's putting into, you should stay focused on the Mableton 2045 Plan. I would not put a lot of energy in looking at comprehensive plan.
So the comp plan conversations that we're having as, with Grice Consulting, is what citizens need to focus on at the moment?
Yes.
Because this right here is just us putting out something that we need, but what we're really focusing on for 2045 is...
Yes, sir.
...the conversations that are happening and the meetings that are happening with Grice Consulting that you should hear about on our website, blah, 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 blah.
Yes, sir. This plan will be superseded by the 2045 Plan once it's adopted. That's probably less than a year, probably five, six months.
And do we know, just spitballing, when is the next meeting for them? Okay.
I don't. They just had the small area study this week, and so they're actively, if you go on the website, Mableton 2045, you'll have that information. There's going to be more input meetings, as well as the small area studies, and a lot of opportunities for the citizens to be involved.
So how does that work? If somebody decides they want to do something in the city between now and the time that happens, it goes up to the zoning planning commission, and they make a determination? And if it fits with the current interim plan, but not necessarily the long-term plan, how does that, I guess I'm just confused how that works? Ms. Garver, if you'd like to address that, please, ma'am.
So we are using the Cobb County future land use map and comprehensive plan now. This will just formally adopt it. So the way the future land use works is it doesn't relate to the current use of the property. It comes in when you have a property that's being rezoned. And so, say, somebody wants to do something on their property that's not currently allowed for their rezoning. They're going to come to the city, Community Development, and they're going to apply for rezoning. What my staff is going to do is we're going to compare what the zoning is on that property to the future land use map. And that future land use map is what is included in the current Cobb County Comprehensive Plan, and which is what we're also adopting or transmitting tonight. So what that means is if you have a property and it's zoned, single-family, and they want to come in and apply for a commercial use, we're going to look at that future land use map to say, okay, this property is zoned and used residentially right now, but when this plan was developed, it said this could eventually turn into a commercial area. And so when staff is reviewing the analysis to recommend the rezoning, we're going to say that's consistent with that future land use map, and that's one piece of that puzzle that would help staff recommend approval. Then it goes to the Planning Commission for their recommendation, and then to Mayor and Council. But if your property is zoned residential, and that future land use map says it's commercial, the zoning is still residential. So that means the person who's living in that property is still living in that property. The future land use only comes in when somebody's asking to make a change.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this point in time, if there's anyone like to speak against the Mableton interim 2045 Comprehensive Plan, please make your way to the podium at this time. You're allowed, ma'am. Procedurally, we have a resident who has already spoken during the public hearing once, only forside. Is that same resident allowed to come back up to speak against it?
Yes, ma'am.
Make your way, ma'am.
Okay, my against is county manager tanks, because I'm not understanding. If it doesn't matter, then why are we here for a public hearing?
I definitely didn't say it doesn't matter. I said it's going to be superseded by the 2045 Plan in the course of a few months.
Well, yeah, that was, those were your words.
Okay, then it does matter. I stand corrected.
Okay, okay, okay. And most people here don't even know, I mean, I'm on the committee for the 2045 Comprehensive Study, so I understand what's going on. But most people in here will not, because we, they haven't seen it. So to, to put something before us, and is this a first read? I mean, what is this? Because I'm not understanding.
And...
I'm just trying to understand.
So we won't have, this was, went before the council, and we had a first read, a second read. We adopted it, but we missed a step. And so DCA came back and says, nah-uh.
Okay. So that's why we're here now for the public hearing.
Right. We missed a step like months ago.
Be compliant. We have to...
Well, where can we find it, though? Like, if I wanted to look at, because isn't it different from the 2045 Comprehensive that we're sitting on the committee?
Yeah, what you guys are doing is the future. This is where we are now in the interim.
Right.
So how do we see it?
The document itself is located on...
It's attached to the agenda.
No, no. Where is it on?
Oh, it's attached to the agenda Susan sent out?
Yes.
Okay.
So if you go to our website, where is it located?
It's attached to the agenda.
Civic question. I said...
If you go on the website, it's under the City Clerk page, under Agenda. That's where you can find the packet.
Right, but that wasn't my question. I said, if you go to the website, can you see it from the website?
That's what I'm saying.
You'll go to on the City Clerk page. Yep, the City Clerk page. Yeah, that's what it is.
And it'll be the September 10th Agenda Packet.
Literally what I said.
At this point in time, is there anyone else that would like to come forward to speak against the Mableton 2045 interim Comprehensive Plan? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Counsel, we have one last opportunity to ask a question of the Assistant Director, if you'd like.
I do have a question, actually.
Please.
Let's say we were to, did get a lot of opposition, there would be no action that we could take. Like, it is kind of, there is no reason for this hearing, is there? Because the decision was made months ago.
The Director at the Georgia Department of Community Affairs told us to have a public hearing to move forward.
I understand it's formality that we have to tick off the list.
So that's what we're doing. Thank you, Ms. Garver. Okay, we're going to move forward with the agenda. The next is Item 7, which is Presentations, Acknowledgement and Proclamations. We do have one, which I feel is quite important. Actually, we have Councilwoman Jeff Coate is kind of responsible for moving this forward, and it fits into some efforts that we're already doing. I'm going to read this in part. And it states, "Whereas literacy is a fundamental skill and a cornerstone of opportunity serving the foundation for education success, workforce readiness, financial stability, and active civic engagement. And whereas research shows that students who proficiently, who read proficiently by the end of third grade are significantly more likely to graduate from high school, pursue further education, and achieve long-term success. Whereas, the State of Georgia has established Georgia Reads, a statewide initiative promoting reading as a shared value and a pathway to opportunity, with Georgia Reads Day set for September 22, 2025. Whereas, the City of Mableton is proud to join this effort in launching what we will call Mableton Reads, a community-wide initiative to promote literacy, encourage lifelong learning, and celebrate the joy of reading for residents of all ages. And whereas, the Mayor's Reading Club will serve as a cornerstone of this effort, inspiring a love of reading in children, supporting literacy development, and providing access to books, reading events, and community resources that help nurture early reading and early development and education success. Now, therefore, I, Michael Owens, Mayor of Mableton, Georgia, do hereby proclaim September 22, 2025, as Mableton Reads Day. In the City of Mableton, I am encouraging all residents, schools, libraries, and community partners to join together in celebrating literacy, supporting the Mayor's Reading Club, and fostering a lifelong love of reading across our city." Thank you. So more to come on this initiative. The Mayor's Reading Club is a program that's been around for quite some time. It's headed up by Georgia Forward. I will take note, because it's an organization many of you are familiar with, Cobb Collaborative is actually one of the Georgia Reads Award winners for 2025. They do collaborate with the Mayor's Reading Club. They've collaborated with myself in efforts to go out to other schools. I know there's a couple of other mayors in Cobb County that are part of this program. We want to be literacy champions. We want to make sure that we're doing everything we can outside of the school system to encourage reading and support our students in this lifelong effort. So hopefully, we'll go forward. We will, more information to come on what we're going to do, not just with the Mableton Reading Club, but expanding beyond that in an effort to be able to help our students, administrators, and our parents brighten the future for all of our children. So thank you for that. At this point in time, we're going to move forward to, say again, ma'am.
I just wanted to clarify. You said resolution. I think you have to vote. Was it a proclamation or a resolution?
Proclamation, ma'am.
Okay, I'll change my wording on the agenda. Thank you.
You're welcome. So we're going to move forward. It's a public comment, so it's Section 9. I understand we have quite a few cards this evening, ma'am?
Yes, I have about 10 cards. And just want to remind everybody, I do have a timer here, if I can operate it properly. But everybody has two minutes to speak. It's not a question-and-answer session here, because this is a business meeting, and we can't go into conversations with each person, or we'll never get to our actual business of the city. But we are glad to hear your comments, and I will call them, call the names out in the order that I received the cards mainly, and I'll let you know who's next, so you can be ready to be up there. The first one to speak is Denise Woods, and then we have Angela Nguyen after Denise, and then Monique Lester will be after Angela. So Denise Woods.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Counsel.
Good evening, ma'am.
Again, I'm up here, again, just asking for help. I've been told I'm going to be moved to another unit. I'm still in the same unit, still hearing raccoons, not sleeping well, and as you can see, I have one hand right now. If they were to break through, what am I going to do? I am powerless right now. All I have is my voice, and I'm hoping that you hear me, because this cannot continue and keep going on. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Angela Nguyen will be next.
Good evening, Mayor Owens. Thank you.
Good evening, ma'am.
Counsel, thank you. I just want to say this. I'm still going through the same thing. It just, I just, I'm just really, I'm just praying now that I do find me a place to go to, because time is running out where I'm living at now. Just don't know what else to say or do, how people can just displace you and move you out and not have anything else in place for you to move to. And it just, it just really, it's tiresome. And I got to stay up all night thinking about, don't get no sleep. All I do is sit up and try to figure out where I'm, what is my next move? So I'm just praying and hoping that God will open up a door for me, even with the bad credit. I got a job. I know something going to come through, but I don't know what. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, Monique Lester, and then Breann Perkins. And then after Breann will be Monica Delancey. Monique Lester first.
Good evening, everybody.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, City Council. I just wanted to say that up in the Silver Creek area, they are doing a lot of changes. We see that every day. I want to, you know, say that. Their ordinance in making them do what they need to do is working. But we just got a couple of notices, and a lot of us got the notice that they are, what I call it, is retaliation now. And saying that we either, in three days, they're going to file eviction on us, a lot of us. And I just wanted to let you all know, Mayor and City Counsel, I believe in my heart is retaliation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Breann Perkins, and following Breann is Monica Delancey.
Good evening, Mayor and City Counsel. My name is Breann Perkins, and I'm here to speak in support of the proposed safe and healthy housing ordinance. This is a critical step towards ensuring that all residents of Mableton have access to safe and habitable housing. By setting clear standards, the ordinance will help prevent situations where tenants are forced to live in unsafe or deteriorating conditions, a challenge our community has faced in the past. At the same time, as we work to implement these standards, we must be mindful of potential displacement. Mableton is home to many essential workers and families who are already struggling with the rising housing costs. We cannot let this enforcement of safety standards unintentionally price residents out of their homes. It is crucial that we pair this ordinance with reverse affordable housing options so tenants have real choices and stability. Finally, I want to caution against labeling older or less updated housing as affordable. Simply because it is not new or fully maintained, true affordability should not come at the expense of safe or habitability. This ordinance gives us a chance to assure that affordable and safety go in hand-in-hand, protecting residents without forcing them to leave their community. Thank you.
Every investment. Great job. I'll do it again, on everything, I love. Monica Delancey, We Thrive a Riverside Renters Association. I do want to just touch base about a very nice program that took place last night, which was the State of the City Address. Loved it. Well, I do want to note that something was left out of it. And what was left out of the State of the Address was the birth of the idea of Mableton. The South Cobb Alliance had a great deal with making sure that the referendum appeared on the ballot. And the main supporters of the South Cobb Alliance, one was Leroy Trey Hutchins, Gault Porter, William Williams, and State Representative Erica Thomas at the time. And I attended the inauguration two years ago. It was not mentioned. I attended the birthday celebrations, the first year and the second year. It was not mentioned. And I was hoping that it was going to be mentioned last night, and it still was not mentioned. Everything else was mentioned but that. And I wanted to just take... And I wanted to take a pause, because I'm going to give my time just to mention, and join me to think, I think Leroy Trey Hutchins is here in the room. Let's applaud Leroy Trey Hutchins. Let's applaud him and thank him, because he did such a wonderful job with his other supporters, Keelan Mitchell, technical support, as well as, I mentioned, oh yes, Monique Scheffler was part of that committee before she became Commissioner. I just want to mention that, because we have to make sure that we tell the story. We're going to tell it right. We're not going to overlook. We're going to tell it right. And I believe that I can do that, because I stand on business on everything that I do. But I'm going to take another 60 seconds to come back and talk about this housing crisis. Okay, please, thank you very much. This housing crisis cannot be affordability of these ragged apartments that have rats and roaches, busted windows, people refusing to update the, excuse me a second, refusing to update the appliances. But then you say it's affordable. We kicked that can down the road too long, too long. And thank all the residents for being here tonight as well. Thank you, oh, excuse me.
Your time is up.
I couldn't hear, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you for your service. Amen. On everything.
Okay, next we have Denny Wilson, and then Phil Barnett, and then Belita Graham. And, Denny Wilson?
Good evening, beautiful program last night. I wasn't able to stay, but I enjoyed what little bit I was able to see. But I come to you this evening to bring you a piece of information, because with the Mableton 2045 Comprehensive Study yesterday, we got into a discussion on the bus, and we talked about creating islands within a city. And it was told to us that islands could not be created. So what I brought to the consulting firm yesterday was, at Veterans Memorial in Riverview Road, there's an island sitting right there. That area is still unincorporated Cobb County. And then if you go on down through the apartments, passing through the apartments, and you get to the other industrial area, where the condominiums are on both sides of the street, near South Cobb Drive, that area is also unincorporated Cobb. So the person on the bus yesterday were, you know, was very adamant about, I didn't know what I was talking about. So this morning, I had breakfast with a friend at the Chattahoochee Coffee Shop, and I went through the area, and I talked to the business owners. And one business owner near Veterans Memorial said, well, it's funny you would come and say that to us, because someone from Smyrna was just here yesterday talking about annexation into Smyrna. So what I'm telling you guys tonight with your community development department is, that would be a great area for Mableton to consider annexing, because it's a bunch of those lumber companies up there. And I know as soon as Smyrna takes it, they're going to get rid of those lumber companies. And then on the other end, I was told the same thing, that Smyrna had approached them on yesterday about annexing the complete Riverview Road into Smyrna. So, just so you know, at the connection of Riverview and Veterans Memorial, the businesses may be on Riverview, the front entrance, but the side entrance is on Veterans Memorial, which will serve the city good, because it would be an additional expansion that you guys can use for trying, and I think you guys are supposed to be acquiring the business across the street, or you're trying to. So just so you know. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Phil Barnett?
It had to be me.
And then?
These mayor and council members. Phil Barnett here, community activist, business owner, District 1. And so I'm here to make a request from the mayor. So we spoke a couple of times before, along with the other council members. The request is, stop painting the Mableton area as an apartment slumlord area, because you got folks that's working hard to keep that mortgage going. And I've been a landlord for a long time, so there's a difference between a landlord and a slumlord. And if you peeping that on the news, and every five minutes, this apartment's this apartment's, I got bigger fish to fry. So we're going to cut that. I'm asking you to cut it today, but I'm already going to cut it, right? I don't want to voice my opinion, because it's not going to look good for some folks. So, and this is not a threat, because sometimes when I make my statements, they take it as a threat. So Ron, I spoke to you when I was on vacation, there was a shooting at Chevron that needs to be addressed. Trey, I spoke to you about the school bus being dropped at a city bus line, right? That needs to be addressed ASAP. So I met the guy who got shot, spoke to his girl, and he's in, he's in good condition. But there's been a couple of shootings, there's no sidewalks, right? So I don't want to run for politics, that's not going to happen. But don't make me run for politics, because I'm here for the 14 to 20-year-old kids that's going to come up. And that's going to be your arch enemas right there. Do what you need to do now, because, and I get it, it's a new city. And I'm not into politics, but I'm a leader by default. I've seen what happened in those apartments, I know what it is. But that's an excuse right now, right? I'm saying the future of Mableton, if you, if you want it to look good, ask the person that knows how to make a city look good. Because I did it for Atlanta, I did it for Rochester, I did it for Brooklyn, I did it for the Bronx. I've been in the trenches. So it sound good when you saying it on the mic, but if you ain't putting the work in, and you're not doing the dirty work, you don't really know. And you can see it on the Nextdoor app. Your community is begging for your help. But you know how to reach out to me, so reach out to me, because I don't want to run for politics.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett.
Phil Barnett? Bahila Graham? Bahila? Sorry, Bahiya. And following her is Carol Young.
Good evening, ma'am.
I sit here, and I listen to you guys talk about businesses, 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 how you want to make Mableton look beautiful, and this, that, and the other. I've heard and been here plenty of times to hear a lot of you say, I raised my children here, I've lived here, I've done this, I've done that. What about the next generation? We talk about how people of color, we want better for our society. That starts with where they live. And with all due respect, I'm from Jersey, I'm a Jersey girl, and I know exactly what you mean of coming through the trenches, but that doesn't mean that we should want our children to go through the trenches. Those people that live in those apartments, all three that we already know, realistically, you guys are wanting to tear them down. Let's be real. And I'm an educated woman, I'm a woman that has degrees. And just because you live in the trenches don't mean that that's not important. And I salute anybody that is doing good for our community, but the community starts with when we're walking and driving up and down Mableton, in the city of Mableton and Riverside Parkway. Six Flags shouldn't be the only thing that looks beautiful. We have children, one is my child, autistic, living in our apartment that has mold, rats, roaches, the list can go on and on. Everybody wants to say, well, why haven't y'all moved? You guys know darn well, the cost of living is beyond a tragedy. And then to have the audacity for people to actually pay their rent, to tell them, give me, you got three days, or I'm filing eviction, for a building that is bankrupt? So who are we giving that money back to? The banks? How about using that money to help these people relocate? You're talking about seniors, you're talking about households full of children. If you really are from the city of Mableton, you guys know better than anybody, no human being, no matter what color, should live the way that we are living. And it takes y'all to make the changes, because we elected y'all.
Mr. Rand, your time is up.
Carol Young, and then Trey Hutchins. And that would be the last card after Trey.
Good afternoon, City Council and the mayor. My name is Carol Young, I live in District 2, Dammie, Councilwoman Dammie's district. I'm here to invite everyone out to two events. One of them I've been working on since December of last year. If you don't know me, I'm very persistent, so we'll get it done. So, it's called the Campus Beautification Day. We've partnered with Riverside Elementary School and the PTA. I'm the Vice President of the Riverside Elementary PTA. And it's sponsored by the Mayor Owens, his Mayor's Educational Impact Fund. So we are so appreciative to him for supporting the schools. It's from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. on September the 13th, this Saturday. We are looking for volunteers. We're talking about beautifying our neighborhood, our city of Mableton. This is one way to come out and do it. It's only for two hours, and you'll get to be with the students at Riverside and make a difference. The second event that I want to talk about, I'm also the founder and CEO of Be Bold Institute, where we do career coaching, we do life coaching, youth entrepreneurship for ages seven to 17 years old, for the youth, and then for adults. So we have our next class, our next cohort is October 1st through November the 12th, 2025, at the Sweetwater Mission. It's a seven-week program, and it's from 6:15 to 7:30. I have flyers, also you can find out more information on our website at beboldthenumber2day.com. And I want to talk about last night, the city, the Mayor's City Address. I thought it was phenomenal. I just liked the backstory that Susan gave, just brick by brick, we've been building this community, and, you know, together we can thrive. So let's keep, keep coming together to build this great city of Mableton. And that's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Leroy Trey Hutchins, I have the privilege of serving on the Cobb County School District Board of Education, representing Post 3, which is parts of Mableton, Ostell, and Powder Springs. Thank you first for your Mableton Reads proclamation, as it officially sets a temperature that Mableton government has a vested interest in the academics of our students within Mableton, specifically around literacy. So thank you so very much for that on this evening. I wanted to take a moment to talk about the small area study that we attended on yesterday, was that, was that yesterday, Monday, in regards to the Comp Plan 2045. I want to speak specifically to the Six Flags Entertainment District quarter, or the Six Flags Small Area Study. It was mentioned in one of those areas in regards to an area right across the street from Word of Faith Church, and it was advised that apartments would go there. And we spoke in that meeting, and we advised differently. So Pebblebrook High School is the only high school in Cobb County that has over 20-plus apartments that feed into it, which affects the academics based on transancy. While I do not speak on behalf of the Board of Education or our superintendent, I do echo their sentiments regarding not approving additional multifamily housing units within the Pebblebrook High School feeder as a result of that. We do have fall break coming up, September 22nd through the 26th. So, we started August 4th, we're out for a week. Pebblebrook High School has a commitment to safety, and I will probably run over my time 10 minutes, but I, for a few seconds, but I just want to make sure, I make sure I give the safety report. On this week, yesterday, we had a BB gun, a fight, and a student brandished a BB gun during that altercation. It caused the school to go into Code Red. While our school district police department and our administrators followed through with their protocols, and the school suffered minimal disruption, we do want to recognize that the incident did happen, but it was rectified quickly. Those students have been, are being handled according to our discipline codes, and to the, and of course, the laws of Cobb County as well. But we want to let you know that everything happened as designed. The Cobb County School District has several layers of support to ensure safety. If you visit our website at cobbk12.org, and you Google Cobb Shield, we have several layers of support.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
I understand. Mr. Mayor, I'm asking for 20 more seconds, if possible. It's a safety report, we had a gun show up in the school yesterday.
There was, and, 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 Mr. Hutchins, I wish you would have, we would have taken this as a report, instead of a public comment.
I understand that.
It's a procedural thing, because I do think it's very important. As you know, my son goes to Pebblebrook.
I do, that's right. As a point of privilege, I'm asking for additional 20 seconds to give the report.
What I, what I will, what I will ask, I will grant that, but as an elected official, that's coming here to provide a report specifically on an incident that occurred at our school.
Okay. Your report for this agenda was already set. This happened yesterday. There will be no way for me to get it in time for you to amend your agenda for a report.
Which is why I'm yielding this time to you, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
The safety of the Cobb County School District is our number-one priority. And as a result of that, if you visit Cobb Shield, you will recognize that we have different layers of support. We just purchased vapor weight dogs, so that they can find weapons as they come into our schools. They have not been deployed into our schools as of yet, because they were in training this week. They will be deployed to Pebblebrook High School full-time on Monday. So we are excited about having that additional layer that we have applied to the Cobb County, to Pebblebrook specifically. We're also looking at an additional officer at Pebblebrook High School, assigned 24. So this will be three officers, and we'll have more officers than any other high school in Pebblebrook, than any other high school in Cobb County. It is imperative that we are clear, this was an isolated incident, it was not a gun. However, we are doing all we can to ensure the safety of all students. Thank you, and thank you for the privilege of, of your time.
Thank you, Trey.
Yes, sir.
Madam, Madam Clerk, is that the last comment card?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. I, I'm going to take a point of personal privilege here, because this was a, this was a serious incident that occurred at the school, it was a very scary incident. There were some kids that were injured, there was, they were searching for a student for some point in time, so I, I want to make sure that if the council has any questions, again, this is not typical public comment, he is an elected official. We, I acknowledge, we didn't have time to, to change things. But I want to make sure the council has an opportunity to ask any questions of you, and you get an adequate amount of time to respond to that.
Thank you for the point of privilege.
I just want to, want you to elaborate on, you said it wasn't a gun, but then you said, previously said it was a BB gun?
Yes. So it wasn't necessarily like a revolver or a pistol firearm. It was, once they found the firearm, what was believed to be a firearm, it was a BB gun that was found. The student left campus and dropped it. We were able to locate it. The reason why we couldn't locate it sooner, because it didn't have gunpowder.
Yeah, got it. It was, there was a video, it was a gun.
I saw it, yeah.
You couldn't tell if it was a BB gun or a real gun.
Exactly. And because it was a video showing a pistol, I want to make sure I clarify what it actually was.
I might have missed it, because you were speaking really fast because of the time. But can you speak more about the safety measures, and when they're going to start implementing those safety measures?
So, we have Cobb Shield. Cobb Shield gives you a variety of layers of support that we currently have. Everyone has a badge on them, the teachers. It puts the school in different codes based on what's happening. Code Red is the, is the one where school goes into complete lockdown, such as an incident with a gun. The school was put into Code Red. Once they located all of the individuals, the school was then put into a Code Yellow. It lowered it to a lower code. In addition to that, we have vapor weight dogs that we have purchased back in the spring. They are now being trained, they are in training this week, it just so happens. One dog is going to be assigned, or one officer, canine officer, will be assigned to Pebblebrook High School full-time, along with that officer. That's going to give us three school resource officers assigned to Pebblebrook High School to ensure the safety of our students and the safety of our staff members at Pebblebrook High School.
So is there a reason that we wouldn't do it to assign them to South Cobb as well?
Well, we are a data-driven decision-making institution. So based on data, it would suggest that it happens at Pebblebrook versus a South Cobb High School. There are less incidents or no incidents at South Cobb High School versus the number of incidents that may have taken place at Pebblebrook High School in the last two or three years.
Interesting. And this is going to be a very TJ statement. So, we're waiting for something to happen at South Cobb before we would assign?
No. As I said, we have layers of support, probably eight different ways in which we can help support school safety. We have several dogs that we purchase, and purchasing more dogs. One will be assigned to Pebblebrook. One will be assigned to Pebblebrook full-time. The other four dogs that we have rove and hit every school. So it's not like they're not, it's not being hit, but we are going to assign one to Pebblebrook. So that's just an additional layer of support based on data that supports that decision.
So then we'll wait for data to say that something has happened at South Cobb before we assign?
Something happens at every school. And we respond accordingly, based on the layers of support we already have, and we're always reevaluating based on incidents. This is a reevaluation based on an incident.
And at some point, can you come back with data about the other schools, like Leland and Mableton Elementary and all those sort of things, schools to say, should we have something there?
In regards to safety?
Yes.
So at the pleasure of the, we'll look at a work session and see what we can do.
Thank you.
I just, anyone else?
Well, I just presume there's an educational component to making sure the kids are abreast on how to respond in the event that something like this occurs again.
Absolutely. That's part of the Cobb Shield. When you go on the website and you review, our students know what to do in a response.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I just want to take a note, as a parent that was obviously impacted by this, give a shout-out to Principal Dana Giles. Because the communication that she sent out was clear, it was accurate, it was comforting. It was clear as to what was going on. And then the follow-up, as they went through the different stages, there was a phone call that went out that parents got to let them know. So parents were informed about what was going on, and I think that was, it's appreciative.
Yeah, I would like to say we have one of the best principal leaders at Pebblebrook High School. She takes it serious, she's a mother. And so I feel safe with my children in that school as a result of the response, her communication, and the plan of work that we have to ensure safety of Cobb schools. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Madam Clerk, we're going to move along in the agenda. Council, we're on item 10 now, which is Consent Agenda. I think you all have been briefed on these. We went over them Monday during the work session. So with that being said, I'd like to go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Now with motions made and properly seconded. Any discussion?
Can we ask for a, for them to be added to the, to, what am I trying to say? Added to the, added to the agenda? I can't think of what I'm trying to say. The school board?
Oh, we can adjust, we will adjust it afterwards. Yes, sure.
Sorry that took so long to get out.
It's okay. The motion's been made and properly seconded. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would like to go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of approval to items on the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. Counsel, we don't have any unfinished business this evening, so we're going to go straight to the new business, which most of it is continuation from before, which is, we'll start with item 12A. It's the second read on the ordinance updating Chapter 2. This is establishing a resignation process for the city boards, commissions, and authorities for other appointees and other lawful purposes. Madam Attorney, has there been any changes made to this ordinance since our first read?
Mayor, there have been no changes, and the recommendation would be adoption.
Thank you. Given so, I'd like to go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the ordinance updating Chapter 2 Administration for the City Code of Ordinance Establishing Resignation Process for the city's boards, commissions, and authority appointees.
So moved, Mayor.
Thank you. Do you have a second? Motion's been made and seconded by Councilman Ferguson. Davis, beat you to it?
I'll give it to him.
Please note, Madam Clerk, seconded by Councilman Davis. Any discussion, counsel? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of approving the motion made by Councilwoman Oladapo, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, thank you. We'll move now to item 12B, which is the second read in ordinance updating Chapter 13. This is our ordinance out is creating the city of Mableton's Safe and Healthy Housing and Property Ordinance for other lawful purposes. I'll add the same question to our attorney. Has there been any substantive changes made to this ordinance since our last read, ma'am?
No, Mayor, no changes. And similar to the past, the last one, the recommendation would be for adoption.
Thank you, do appreciate it. With that being said, I will go ahead and entertain a motion to approve this ordinance.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this ordinance.
Thank you. Motion's been made.
A second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded by Councilman Ferguson. That being said, any further discussions?
There is one further discussion. I would like to make sure that we put on the agenda soon. Now that we've, that we're going to adopt this, that we start talking about what is kind of the supporting information for this, what we're going to do, what the communication schedule looks like, what all that sort of thing looks like for homeowners, and how we're going to actually get to the point of actually working through this, these issues, and what this issue looks like. I know that city manager kind of said last time that there's a big plan that has to be put in place. I'd like to get that on the schedule.
Thank you, Councilman Ferguson. I do want to note, you are not talking about something that directly relates to the ordinance, but a future measure that you want to see take place. That is noted, I'm sure the clerk has that. I do want to reiterate that within this ordinance, there is specific notice to tenants regarding state protections that relates to retaliation by landlords. It is explicitly precluded in this ordinance, but it's also one that was in the House Bill 404. So it is already a standing element that is illegal and that tenants do have protections for retaliation. We are echoing that in this as well, as well as making very specific call-outs as to what is deemed as inhabitable scenarios and situations. Mold is explicitly called out in this, so are rodents, infestations. We make clear that we define this. Now, I will say again, this goes beyond what the House Bill 404 created. They did create a very good bill, but they stopped short of actually defining what habitable means. So we've been able to move forward and pass that. And the goal for this is to make sure that all of our residents in the city of Mableton, no matter where they live or what type of housing they have, that it is safe and that it is healthy for them.
Agreed. Mayor, I agree with that. I just know that there's that next step that we need to go as the city, and what we're going to do for individual residents, and we need to make sure that that gets clearly defined, and what they can expect going forward when we adopt this resolution. So, but I agree with you. I agree with what we were.
Yeah. I just want to make sure we don't ever rotate.
Yep.
Right? Because we can anticipate what may happen, but we can't dictate what may happen.
Agreed.
Any other discussion, counsel? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of approval of an ordinance updating Chapter 13, nuisances that would create the city of Mableton Health and Safe and Healthy Housing and Property Ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. No opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. Please note, Madam Clerk. All right, counsel, we'll move forward to item 12C. This is the first read on an ordinance updating Chapter 1, which is general government of the city code of ordinance is establish an emergency procedures for the protection, safety, health, or the well-being of citizens of the city of Mableton, Georgia. Yeah. So I know we did discuss this on Monday at our work session, and to my knowledge, I don't think anything has changed, but counsel, you have an opportunity, hopefully, to have, take another look at this before we move forward. At this point in time, though, it is a first read, so we will not be voting on it. But counsel, I will give an opportunity, if you have any questions about it, would like to request any updates or changes to let our attorney know.
Mayor, one question I have is, I was reading through the declaration of emergency area, and I guess my question is, it says federal, state, local. So who declares an emergency for the city of Mableton? Is that declared by the county, the state? Who declares that?
I do.
Okay.
The mayor does.
And what, I don't see, what is the process for you to actually declare that? And can the city manager declare it? It can only be declared by the mayor?
So when, my understanding is yes. Once it's declared, the city manager steps in, or if we had an emergency management director.
Okay.
We don't have an emergency management director at this time. Our goal is to have one as we move forward with further discussions about the emergency management, public safety, things we will be discussing going forward. And then we'll start to get over into your area of standard operating procedures and how that moves forward.
Okay.
Any other questions, counsel?
Mayor, ma'am.
You may, ma'am.
This is a response, Councilman Ferguson, but the process will essentially be, if you scroll down to subsection B, and it's on page 4, the mayor would just complete this form in a substantial support template, then would just outline the circumstances, emergency nature, et cetera, and then give that to the code. And then that would trigger the declaration. And it would last for no more than thirty days. The mayor can continue emergencies by following the declaration before the period expires. And this is very slow to the process of government.
Any other questions or comments at this time, counsel? All right, hearing none, we are going to move to item 12D. Now, item 12D is the resolution approving and adopting a local emergency operations plan and for other lawful purposes. We discussed this Monday as well at the work session. They go tandem, hand in hand. But it was my understanding, Madam Attorney, that we were going to defer this?
Yes, this is, the request would be no action on the resolution, but it's been placed on the agenda for notice and transparency purposes. And also, because if you look at the attachment, it's close to 500 pages.
Yes, ma'am.
So obviously, the council would need time to look through. So this will probably appear on every agenda that we actually attach the ordinance to. And that's just to bring it back to your attention, just because the document is so large.
Thank you, ma'am. So with that being said, I think the appropriate course is to entertain a motion to defer this to our next, no.
No action.
Let's just not, let's take no action.
Yeah, you don't need to defer, just no action.
That's fair enough. All right, with that being said, counsel, there's no other further business in front of us this evening. With that being said, Madam Attorney, do you have any comments for this evening?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk? Thank you. Councilman Davis?
Yes, just briefly, I just want to thank everyone again who came out to the Affordable Housing and Lending Form that was, did in tandem with District 1 and 2. Great information, great panel, great moderators. I couldn't have asked for, well, I could have asked for better, but I'm satisfied. But again, we'll be having more. There are more to come. The next one will be, of course, on public safety. Looking forward to that. But I was very pleased with the interaction and the engagement. So stay tuned for more that will be coming in terms of engagement, information, and even some entertainment at some point. So have a great night, and that's all I have.
Councilman Oladapo?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to second what Councilman Davis said. We are so appreciative of everyone who came out. And I especially want to thank Councilman Davis and his team for putting that symposium together. It was such a great turnout. And we had a panel of just experts who came and shared a lot of wisdom when it comes to lending and also buying your home. And it was such a productive conversation. I hope that everyone who came had some key takeaways to take home with them. So I really appreciate your effort there, Councilman Davis. Secondly, I want to also thank those who came out to the focus group that we held a few days ago with the team who is working on our comprehensive plan for 2045. The focus group was for the Six Flags Entertainment District and also the Riverline District. It was such an engaging conversation. It was a collaborative discussion. And we also had a nice little field trip where we got on buses and rode around the district. So that was a lot of fun. But I am very thankful for all of you who came out and engaged in that productive discussion with that team, telling them what you want to see in our city. So that is very critical, and we are so thankful for everyone who came out. And I also want to flag that Saturday, the 13th, from 10:00 to 12:00 p.m. is the Riverside Elementary Campus Beautification Day. And Ms. Carol Young talked about this briefly during the public comment. We're hoping you all can come out and help us beautify our school. I think there's an activity for everyone. If you don't want to plant, you can paint rocks, you can paint mural, you can. That is a fun activity. And I think we also have activities for all age groups. So it's not just for adults, it's also for children. It's going to be a fun, family-friendly event, an opportunity to do some volunteering hours this year, if you haven't already. So I think, I think it would be great. So I do hope you make out time to come out and help our schools be beautiful. And, you know, because it lifts up the children's minds as well when they're in a beautiful environment. And lastly, I want to congratulate the mayor and the staff for a successful State of the City address. My God, when I came in here, I could not believe that this was the epicenter. I have never been in that theater before, and it was just such a great event. And you all did such a fantastic job. I absolutely loved the recap by Susan and Lulu, because I feel like we have forgotten how things came to be. We have come such a long way from where we started, and it was such a good reminder of that. So thank you, Susan and Lulu, for that beautiful recap. And also for the city staff, the city manager, everyone who put this together. This was, I mean, it was such a fantastic event. And I've heard very good feedback, and also the mayor, great, great job. So I just want to thank you all for all you do and for your engagement. I mean, we can't do this without you. You have been a true source of support since we started the city, since we've started taking on services. And I hope we can continue to count on that support along with some grace as we continue to navigate how to move the city forward. So, all right, that was kind of long-winded. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Jeff Cook?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here tonight. I'm wearing pink tonight in honor of my friend Tamika, who lost her courageous 10-year fight with breast cancer last week. Tamika and I met over 30 years ago in middle school when we were cheerleaders together. Throughout her life, she was just such a bright light in this world. She was God-fearing, a prayer warrior, a mother, and author, and a proud CEO of her own nonprofit, Faith Strong. And I'm just so grateful for her friendship, for demonstrating what true strength looks like. Next month is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so this is a call to action. So please, schedule your annual checkups for early detection, and let's continue to stand with and lift up those who battle this horrible disease. Yes, cancer sucks, but like it was said at her memorial service, cancer didn't get the best of her, we did. So I'm sending my condolences to her two boys, her mother, her family, and all of us who were blessed to have known and loved her. As far as the housing symposium, it was absolutely wonderful. You know, there's so much information that we received. The only opportunity was just that I wish that there were more people that were there. I think everyone needed to hear from the experts that were on the panel. And I do want to give congratulations to Councilman Davis and Councilwoman Oladapo. They did an amazing job. Yes, they did. And I was just excited to be there. And so I'm looking forward to hearing more about the public safety one, and hopefully, we can get together and do it. about the public safety one, and hopefully we can get together and do an economic development symposium as well at some point. As far as the Mableton Reads proclamation, I'm just really excited about that. I've always had an affinity for books from an early, very early age, passionate about reading, and it can change your life and open up your mind to a whole new world. And so I'm just excited about what we'll be able to do in alignment with Georgia Reads on September twenty-second. The need is urgent, it is now. One in six adults struggle with essential reading skills, and about a third of our fourth graders read at a proficient level. So there's a lot of work that we need to do, and we need to remember strong literacy skills, open up, up doors to better education, stronger families, better jobs, and safer communities. So I do want to encourage all residents, students, parents, the community leaders to join us on September twenty-second, and be on the lookout of some initiatives that we'll get a chance and opportunity to do in the future. It's very important. And then lastly, I do want to piggyback off of what Councilwoman Oladipo said about last night's events. It was just amazing to see how far we've come along this, this journey. We're no longer in quicksand, we're, we're standing a little bit, right? The little engine that could. So much work went into what we've done along this journey. I do want to take a point of privilege to also thank my mother for an entire year. She did provide us with food. And so I do want to thank her for that, and, and.
Councilwoman.
Yeah, well, that was coined by Councilwoman Alk, who calls her Councilwoman. So I do want to, do want to thank you, Mom, for that again. And then also the beautiful stories that our city clerk, Susan, as well as Bill and Lily, and then the mayor, Mr. Showman, did an amazing job. That's his nickname, you guys. Yes, he, he did a great job, you know, telling our story, our journey. So much more to come that I'm looking forward to. So thank you all again for coming out. And if you didn't get a chance to see it, I believe it's on YouTube, so you can go out and take a look at it, and, and, and look at what we, we were able to accomplish last night. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Alk?
Thank you, Mayor Owens. Is it working?
Yep, yeah.
Sorry. I don't want to be too repetitive and repeat everything that's been said already, but I do appreciate everyone who has been engaged this week, whether you went to the housing symposium, or the State, the City Address, or involved in the comprehensive plans, field trip, stakeholders meeting. These are all things that are really important for our city and for getting engagement. So however you choose to be engaged, it's, it's appreciated. And there are other opportunities to be engaged. I plan to attend the Riverside Elementary Beautification Initiative, but there is also other ways you can be engaged this Saturday if, if you want to help in other events. One is, the Native Plant Society is having their workday at Heritage Park at nine A. M. on Saturday, the thirteenth. Queens Mill Road is having an adopt a mild cleanup. You'll have to look online at the location, it's slipping my mind right now. And then our Giving Garden, located at seventy-five Cooper Lake Road, is having their fall plant sale, and is their biggest fundraiser, or one of their fundraisers of the year to help support food insecurity in our community. So I hope you will find a way to get involved and stay engaged. There's plenty to choose from, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman, Councilman Ferguson.
Ferguson, say it with me. So, hey, my wife gets on me because I don't, if I don't write things down and say exactly what it is I'm going to say, and unfortunately, I didn't say what I wrote down. So if I ramble, somebody can hit me. So I thank everybody that showed up on Saturday for an amazing, amazing conversation about men's mental health. We had men, we had women, we were at the Green Room Restaurant. They were awesome, awesome, awesome hosts for us. So we ate well, and then we also understood what it is that this mental health battle looks like. And I want to make sure that I publicly say, anytime that you hear me talk about a mental health event, men and women are both welcome, because what they explained to me on Saturday was, while we're going to focus on men's mental health, it's a health crisis, and women, our women, are the best people to help us identify those issues, and identify where we are, and then to help us go through it. So anytime that you hear that I am having a mental health initiative or event, women come to. I, I want to make sure that that's it. Councilwoman Oladipo, do you hear me? Yeah, so I, I just want to make sure that I'm very grateful for the number of people that showed up, you know, different council members, different, the city folks that showed up. We've got to be able to identify, and, you know, even, yeah, a bunch of folks showed up. We also had, that was with T-two-S was the name of the company, T-two Us Cares. They're going to do some other events with us, and, again, focusing on everything that is men's or mental health as it, we're also going to partner, Mr. Hutchins, we're also going to try to partner with the school districts, and make sure that we can get them in the school districts so that they can start talking about mental health at that level. So several things that we're going to do. I'm going to shut up because I didn't write it down, so, and my wife will get me. So thank you all for coming out tonight, and I appreciate you all.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Herndon.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to be short and sweet with my announcements. I, I do want to echo the other comments about last night's event. I, I tell you, I took a trip down memory lane. I, I just remember where we came from, where we, and where we are today, and so I, I really appreciate the progress the city has made. Of course, the mayor did an excellent job as well. He definitely filled everything in, and it was nice to see and hear about the vision, you know, that we all have for Mableton as it continues to progress in the years to come. I have a quick announcement, well, actually, not, it's not, not announcement, it's more like a request. So we were talking about Mableton Reads, and we all know that oftentimes our young people during the summer end up kind of losing some of their skills during the summer. And so there are a number of people who are trying to keep that from happening, and one of them is the Premier Martial Arts in Astell. They are providing tutoring for two hours each Saturday during the summer in math and English for our students. But at the same time, they're also requesting for teachers, tutors, students, you know, who are strong and have skills in mathematics and English, if they would be able to volunteer for two hours each Saturday during the summer to help our young people stay on task and on track during the summer. And if you are interested in volunteering, you can reach out directly to the owner, Mr. Gus Gordy, of Premier Martial Arts. The address is at, is in my district at thirteen fifty-five East West Connector in Astell, and you can reach out to him directly at gus@premiermartialarts-astell.com. And if it's easier, you can reach out directly to me, which is devra.herndon@mabelton.gov, and I can send you his information if you're willing to volunteer some of your time to teach our young folks this, this, this summer. So thank you, everyone, for being here. Those of you who are in the audience, and I didn't get my report on how many people are online today, but I'm sure there are some. So thank you all for tuning in and for being here to support our council meetings.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Manager, I will, I will yield the floor temporarily to you, because you're out of the room when we started. Do you have any comments for tonight, sir?
I apologize, Mayor, I had to make a decision, handle something. I did want to, I think everybody's already said thank you, but particularly want to shout out the Office of the Mayor's staff. You know, folks think I had something to do with that, to be honest with you, it was T.J. Copeland, his team, and all of them that organized. I was just actually too busy to get involved, so I'm not going to take credit where I haven't earned it. That, that Office of the Mayor's staff, that was T.J. Copeland, Ms. Ashley Wegby, and I know, Mayor, you'll probably shout them out, but I want everybody to know, they really pulled it off with our staff. So made us all look good. Everybody kept saying, I know you worked hard. I want to say, actually, I hadn't done anything except showed up, so I cannot take credit. It was outstanding. Matter of fact, it exceeded my expectations. So I'm shouting out their staff. And also want to let the council know, over here to my right is our new H.R. Director, Ms. Jean Pope.
Yes.
She started yesterday, and she's already taken work away from me, hallelujah. I'm shooting emails to her right now. So just glad she's here, welcome aboard, and we're very proud. And I know that, you know, you've been working with Candace as she come on, but I wanted to just say publicly, we have an H.R. Director, and she is ready to go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I do not have a reason to go in executive session.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you, thank you for that. All right, so, so much to say, so much that has been said already. I do want to start off by recognizing the staff that's in the Office of the Mayor that put together this, the inaugural State of the City address. They have worked, I, I want to say almost round the clock, seven days a week for the last few months, to try to make this happen, because they believed in what I believed in, which is that you guys deserve to have the absolute best State of the City, be represented the best way absolutely possible. So hopefully, we did that. Shout out to our Chief of Staff, T.J. Copeland, the Admin Assistant, Ashley Wegby, and the guy who's running around with the camera all the time, Justin Barr. Justin had a tough job in this, too, because we had eight hundred and ninety-seven registrants for the State of the City address. And yes, and I will continue to say, when we host events, community gatherings for the community, they will show up. When we provide opportunities to get informed, to be involved, to take part in this grand experiment, they show up. So I'm, I'm never surprised when, when we have very huge numbers for things, but I am thankful. I'm thankful that, that people cared enough to come out to, to not just hear about where, where we've came, how far we've come, but much more important about where we're going, right, and the plans that we're putting together, the vision that we want to collectively set, and how we're going to go forward collectively to make a difference. So I am, I am absolutely thrilled at what we were able to accomplish last night, but as I said, the best is yet to come, right? So there's a lot more to look forward to. The second thing, painting rocks is a real thing.
Thank you.
And I know, because we went to Home Depot today to go pick up rocks that, that students will be painting.
I thought you said planting. I was really confused, too.
No, no, painting, we'll be painting rocks. So part of the activity is to have the kids in after-school program to paint rocks. But let's, let's just get to the, to the heart of this. Our schools continue to need our help in whatever way we can provide. I've said many times, in much people's dismay, as mayor and council, we have no control over a school system, but we can do what we can to improve the education in the city. And what we know is that when kids have the necessary resources and support, it does make a difference. It also makes a difference from a city perspective when people can be proud about what their school looks like. So beautification effort that can be led by nonprofits and by parents and PTA's, we absolutely want to be involved. So yes, if that means going out to Home Depot on a Wednesday afternoon and picking up rocks, that's what I'm going to do. The kids, they're rocks. I don't know exactly what they're going to do, but they're going to be painting rocks and, and doing some really, really cool things. What we need to do is make sure that there's other volunteers as well, because there is some, there's some not-so-cute work that needs to be done, too. There is, there's some revitalization that needs to go on. So we'll be, Friday, we'll be going to pick up mulch and planted, plants and other things, so we'll, we'll have a great time out there. But it's truly about giving back and making sure that we can help, if we can help beautify and change the perspective of our schools from the outside, we'll let the teachers, administrators handle what goes on the inside. If we can help, we absolutely will. So if you can show up on, on Saturday for that, please do so. Don't wear any nice clothes or suits, because we're going to be getting dirty. I want to continue to, to shout out our Small Business Saturday, because as y'all know, every Saturday, Small Business Saturday in the city of Mableton. We will continue this, we get a lot of good feedback from it. It's just our part of doing what we can to highlight and make sure that we expand the growth of this city through our small businesses, as well as the big companies as well, but we want to make sure we continue to support our small businesses. I, I want to speak, I won't touch on the housing symposium, because that, it's been said, it was a fantastic event. The details that was mentioned, though, and something that was not mentioned, is the reason that sharing information at a housing symposium or town hall isn't simply done for, for the sake of sharing information. You can go online, you can Google this information, it's out there. The important part about it is to be able to put a name with a face, to be able to come directly in touch with people that can help change lives, and in this way, finding pathways to homeownership. And one of the things that I've said all along is that one of the goals that even personally I want to make sure is that we find more ways for pathways for homeownership in this city. We all know that most people, that's the largest investment they will ever make in their home, but we also know some people will never own a home. And if what we can do is by bringing together experts that are in this field, and banking, management, and brokers, and, and mortgage lenders, that can help show people how to get closer to homeownership, that is a true value. So it's not just information, it's the ability to leave there with tools and, and phone numbers that can actually help change someone's life. I do want to make one, one quick comment about the State of the City last night, and I believe that was an oversight, and I, I want to publicly acknowledge that, is that we did not do a sufficient job. While it was almost impossible to recognize everyone that was there last night, we did not specifically acknowledge members of our school board. And we know that we have a school board member that is here consistently informing us what's going on, Mr. Trey Hutchins. But I, but I'll also mention that there were several other school board members that was there as well, including Mr. Scammerhorn was there and others. So I do want to say that that was an oversight, and, you know, we will continue to do, do better, but we also will continue to build our relationship between the city and the school board, so we can have many more great things to come. That's all I had that I wanted to bring up. I will mention on Mableton Reads, there is some great stuff. I'm already getting messages because people are watching, and they're already feeding in. Stay tuned for September twenty-second. But the Mayor's Reading Club is something that we're already doing. Since we started the city, we've had the Mayor's Reading Club. Lily and I have been into numerous schools throughout the city of Mableton, reading to youngsters. It always puts a smile on my face, it puts a smile on their face, but I know that we can do more, right? So hopefully, through Mableton Reads, we will find ways to partner more with nonprofits, and, and we will do more, because, again, we may not be able to change what happens directly inside the school from outside of the school walls. We're going to continue to do what we can. Is that Ms. Joe Lehman back there, I see?
Yes.
We, we will continue to partner with our libraries as well, to make sure that people are showing up and supporting our South Coast Regional Library. With that being said, ladies and gentlemen, members of our community, we do not have a recommendation to go into executive session tonight.
I thought we were leaving.
It's, it's not of much an urgent nature to have us go in tonight. We, it's not quite dark yet, so if you guys will entertain a motion, make a motion this evening.
I'd like to make a motion, too.
Adjourn for this evening?
To adjourn for this evening.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been properly seconded by Councilman Oladipo. I'm certain there's no discussion on this, so I'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Sorry.
Been a long week.
There's no opposition, ayes have it, we will stand adjourned, ladies and gentlemen.
Oh, what time.
Thank you.